Kevin and Ed Renee, did I see you? I had, okay, thank you. Okay, it looks like we're on. Hey. Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Coder. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services with the Lockport City School District. I will be acting as temporary chairperson for the reorganizational meeting of the Lockport Board of Education. I would now like to do a salute to the flag. And trustee Tobin, would you please lead us in the flag?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地无边， justice broad.
Thank you. I would also at this time like to appoint Bonnie Boden Distel to act in the capacity of temporary secretary. And the next item on our agenda is the swearing in of our new trustees. Each of you should have received an oath card on Monday. Does everybody have their oath cards? And I'm going to go in alphabetical order. So new trustee Renee Cheatham, if you could please recite the oath. Oh, you're muted Renee. Control D will get you unmuted. Is she good? Can't hear.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
No pressure Renee.
Okay. I, do you want me to start with my name, I Renee Cheatham?
Yes.
Okay. I Renee Cheatham do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations trustee Cheatham.
Thank you.
And if you could sign your oath card in blue and at your convenience, just get it back over to my office, that would be great.
Okay.
We would now, I call on trustee Hare. If you could please raise your hand and take your oath of office, please.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations trustee Hare.
Thank you.
And again, if you could sign your oath card in blue and then just get it back to my office. Thank you. Trustee Kershaw, your turn.
I Martha Kershaw do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations trustee. Again, if you could sign your oath card in blue and then return to my office at your earliest convenience. And then trustee Sandell, your turn.
Yes, I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations trustee Sandell. Again, if you could sign your oath card in blue and return to my office at your earliest convenience.
It's already in your office.
Wow, you're good. Okay. Yeah, she did stop in earlier, I do remember that, so. So now it is time to do roll call. We will do a virtual roll call. And temporary secretary Bonnie Boden Distel will start the roll call. Are you off mute?
Trustee Cheatham.
Here. There we go.
She answered.
Yeah, she answered.
Let's see here.
Here.
Trustee Kershaw.
Here.
Trustee Lambalzer.
Here.
Trustee Pratt. Trustee Sandell.
Here.
Trustee Tobin.
Here.
Trustee Linderman.
Here.
And trustee Young.
Here.
Thank you very much Bonnie.
You're welcome.
We will now do the election of officers. We will look at the Office of President of the Board of Education first. Do I have any nominations? Trustee Hare.
I would like to nominate Karen Young as president.
Do we have a second for Karen Young?
Second.
Trustee Tobin got me in the ear back here. So we have a motion and a second for Karen Young. Trustee Young, will you accept the nomination for president?
Yes, I do.
Do we have any other nominations for president for the Board of Education? No other nominations being brought forward? All those, we're going to do roll call in favor or not. Bonnie Boden Distel, please start the roll call.
Trustee Cheatham.
Here.
Yeah, it's I or Nae Renee.
Oh, I'm sorry. I.
Okay.
Trustee Hare.
I.
Trustee Kershaw.
I.
Trustee Lambalzer.
I.
Trustee Pratt.
I.
Trustee Sandell.
I.
Trustee Tobin. Trustee Linderman.
I.
And trustee Young.
I.
Congratulations, our new president.
Right hand?
Right hand.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President Board of Education.
According?
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, President Young.
And now could I borrow a blue pen because I have.
I will now accept nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education. Nomination please, trustee Sandell.
I nominate John Linderman.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Trustee Hare, there is a motion and a second to nominate John Linderman. John, will you accept the nomination of vice president?
I will.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education? There being no other nomination, we will now do a roll call of I or Nae Bonnie.
Trustee Cheatham.
I.
Trustee Hare.
I.
Trustee Kershaw.
I.
Trustee Lambalzer.
I.
Trustee Pratt.
I.
Trustee Sandell.
I.
Trustee Tobin. Trustee Linderman.
I.
And trustee Young.
I.
Vice President Linderman, will you please read the oath at your seat?
I will. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Vice President. You need a blue pen? I will now accept nominations for the position of Secretary of the Board of Education. Nominations please.
I nominate Ed Sandell.
A nomination for Ed Sandell, is there a second?
I second.
Second by trustee Kershaw. Trustee Sandell, will you accept the nomination as secretary for Board of Education?
Yes, because I love to read that gloves thing every winter.
Okay, glad to hear it. Other nominations for secretary for the Board of Education? There being no other nominations for secretary for the Board of Education, Bonnie Boden Distel, will you please do a roll call vote?
Trustee Cheatham.
I.
Trustee Hare.
I.
Trustee Kershaw.
I.
Trustee Lambalzer.
I.
Trustee Pratt.
I.
Trustee Sandell.
I.
Trustee Tobin. Trustee Linderman. Trustee Young.
I.
Trustee, secretary Sandell, you don't have an oath card with you.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
Perfect, will you please read the oath for, but and your title on this oath card would be Secretary Board of Education, okay?
Yeah, that would have been my guess, but thank you. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Secretary Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, secretary Sandell.
Thank you.
I lost Renee.
Oh, she's coming back.
Renee, are you back? Yep, she's back.
I haven't signed that card yet, though.
Alrighty, I have it right here, ready and waiting for you. With a blue pen. Trustee Cheatham, are you back with us? Oh, there she is.
I am, but I can't see you guys.
Uh, Rob? Is there like a video camera by you Renee? We can see you.
Yeah, I can't see you. There is.
So there's three little buttons, three little dots.
Yeah, unmute if you're going to direct her, yeah.
Renee, there's three little dots in the bottom right-hand corner.
Okay.
Of the bar that pops up where you have your mute option and your.
Yeah, it says stop recording.
I think you have to go to the bottom three in the middle of the screen and start video. Or turn it on.
Yeah, it's turned on, I just don't see you guys.
Oh.
So there should still be three, it should say like turn on captions, present now.
Yes.
And then three little dots. Okay, if you click on those three little dots, it'll give you a menu and it'll say change layout.
Okay.
Try tiled and that way you can usually see everyone even if they're not speaking.
There we. You're back.
Good. Yay. We're a few months ahead of you on figuring this out, so.
And you're C, you're at the front of the alphabet, so that's why I go to you first, so sorry. She's on, yeah, I think she's on, yes. So president Young, would you like to continue on with the rest of the reorganization meeting? Or do you want me to continue?
I will continue on with the meeting.
Alright, if you don't mind, we'd like to switch so I can hand you your nice trustee little cable.
Good.
Give us a minute to switch out.
Okay. Everyone bear with me, this is my first time, so we're going to all go through this together, nice and slow. Okay, so, next on our reorg agenda, we have number six, which is the appointment of officers. These are all one-year appointments that have been recommended by the superintendent. And we have A through F. And if, and I would like secretary Boden to make note of the motion and second please. And vote. So with that, I would like a motion to approve number six, A through F.
Some more.
I'll second.
So I have trustee Hare with the motion and I have vice president Linderman with the second. All in favor?
Oh, roll call.
Discussion? Okay, no discussion. And so then with that, I will ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Cheatham.
Hi.
Trustee Hare.
Hi.
Trustee Kershaw.
I.
Trustee Lambalzer. Trustee Pratt.
I.
Secretary Sandell.
I.
Trustee Tobin. Vice President Linderman.
I.
And president Young.
I. So with that, the motion is carried. So at this point, I would like our district clerk, Ms. Coder to. I will continue on the agenda. With the recording of the vote, yes. Please, thank you.
Temporary secretary Boden Distel, you're done.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on, number seven, other appointments. The Board of Education, we are going to make the following one-year appointments. We're going to need one motion for these actions. And there are quite a few. We have professional service appointment, A through I. Client officer designation, J through double E. And community appointment, double F. So with that, I need a motion. Trustee Tobin. Sorry, second. Trustee Kershaw, discussion?
I, I have a question. I never noticed under community appointments before that there's a Republican, a Democrat to be determined. Why do we even have political designations? Why not independent, why not something else? You know, there's right-to-life parties, there's hundreds of parties. Why do we even have this on here? What's the purpose of community appointments?
Can I just interject before that question is answered? We're getting a lot of feedback, if you're not speaking, it helps if you put your microphone up. Trustee Sandell, you may need that.
I think, Kevin, I think it might be your little dots are moving.
I don't know what the hell I just did. Can you mute?
You're muted, you're muted.
I can answer the question.
And vice president Linderman.
Trustee Sandell, it has to do with the board of elections, the board of elections for voting, the Republican and the Democrat.
So. I think superintendent Bradley was just answering, yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Coder, I started, but you, go ahead, thank you.
Okay. So trustee Sandell, to answer your question, the district has, it's part of the annual vote, we have to have one day, it's called the Board of Registration, where it allows the community, we have to put it in our legal ad, it allows the community to come to our district office and register and to vote in our school district votes. The district has set up, it's always one Republican and one Democrat who sit here from noon until 7:00 PM. If anybody from the community would rather come here to register to vote instead of going to the DMV registration link to vote. It is a requirement, that's why that's there. It used to always be L V Johnson and Marilyn Manouni and they decided to retire this year. So we have not determined who the new Democrat and the new Republican will be, that's why it says to be determined.
The follow-on question then would be, how do they get chosen and when would we approve that? At some later date, is that the idea?
Yeah, we can bring the names back. Right now, you're approving the concept of having your board of registration being one Democrat and one Republican with the names to be told later. But we'll certainly update the Board of Education.
When that happens.
No, they gave us notice just prior to this last, this last vote. They had done the board of registration for this past year and then they let us know they weren't coming back. We didn't have enough time to secure new ones yet.
Okay, but it'll be an action taken at some future board meeting or something?
Well, the action is now, but we will let you know the names. We can take action again. You're taking action to appoint the positions right now with the names to be determined.
Right, I guess, it just, it seems like you'd have to take action when the name is determined. But, okay.
But, I mean, you can certainly back off on double F and not approve it if you don't want to.
No, 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 I was just curious what it was and how it works, that's all.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Thank you.
And president Young, I have a question about that as well, now that Ed brought that up. It's a Democrat, a Republican, but by no means does that mean that the people coming to register have to register or be part of those parties.
That's correct.
Sure. Anyone can come and register, no matter what your party affiliation.
Yes.
Somewhere years ago, they decided a Democrat and a Republican.
Thank you for that, absolutely.
I have a question.
Trustee Kershaw.
So I had a question about L, which is Central Treasurer's Extra Classroom. There's three listed for the intermediate, middle, and high school, but there's nothing listed for the elementary schools, so how are those handled?
There are no, there are no elementary clubs that involve money.
Okay.
They can only be grades, it was actually seven through 12, but because Emmett had one when it used to be a middle school, we were allowed to grandfather it in. So those are the only three that can raise funds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further discussion? Just checking everybody's screen, it looks good. Okay, and so I have a motion, a second, and so I need a roll call vote.
Okay, trustee Cheatham.
I.
Trustee Hare.
I.
Trustee Kershaw.
I.
Trustee Lambalzer.
Nay.
Trustee Pratt.
I.
Trustee Sandell.
I.
Trustee Tobin. Vice President Linderman.
I.
President Young.
I.
Motion is carried. Next we have number eight, designations. And we just need one motion for A and B. Motion please.
I saw.
Vice President Linderman and second trustee Hare. Discussion? No discussion? Okay, so we just need a roll call vote then.
Trustee Cheatham.
I'm right here. I just need to know exactly where you're following from, because I'm lost here. Hang on a second.
I didn't hear.
Someone dropped off stuff, the secretary, are you going from that that you dropped off to me today?
Yep, it's going to be the agenda, the agenda, not the yellow sheet agenda, it's going to be the, would have been your packet.
But the revised one came this afternoon.
So am I using the revised one, is that where you're going?
It's the green one, yeah.
In the package you got this afternoon.
Okay, I got it.
The packet you got this afternoon.
Yes.
And we are on number eight.
Page three, number eight.
On page three.
Okay.
We good?
I'm, okay, nevermind.
You okay?
Proceed with roll call.
So at this point, we are going to proceed with roll call, yeah.
Trustee Cheatham.
I.
Trustee Hare.
I.
Trustee Kershaw.
I.
Trustee Lambalzer.
I.
Trustee Pratt.
I.
I.
Trustee Tobin. Vice President Linderman.
I.
President Young.
I. And if everybody can just make sure that you're muting in between motions, we've got a lot of people on here, so we want to make sure that everybody can hear everything okay. Thank you. Do I need to gavel? Did I miss the gavel again? Just to do it. Sorry. So motion is carried, we're on to number nine. We are establishing our board meeting schedule. We're going to take one motion for this action. And that is it for this one, so I need a motion please. Trustee Tobin, second.
Second.
Secretary Sandell, discussion? I would just like to point out that we did add on that if, if necessary, that we need to continue on with virtual meetings or if at any point during the next year we have to go back to virtual meetings, if we do end up back in person, depending on how everything goes, those virtual meetings start at five. All of our normal meetings will start at six. So there is a little notation there underneath the calendar, just want to make sure, point that out to all of our viewers at home as well as the trustees here. So. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote please.
Trustee Cheatham.
I.
Trustee Hare.
I.
Trustee Kershaw.
I.
Trustee Lambalzer.
I.
Trustee Pratt.
I.
Trustee Sandell.
I.
Trustee Tobin. Vice President Linderman. President Young.
I. Motion carried. Number 10, we have authorizations and we're going to use one motion for numbers 10, 11, and 12. So we've got superintendent authorizations, A through F. Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Management Services, Services authorizations, G through K. Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, L. Board authorizations, M, which is on page eight of your packet, and N. Other authorizations, which are O, P, which is page seven of your packet, Q, R, S, and T. Number 11, other items, A through C, and number 12, A through E. I need a motion please for all of that.
Some more.
Secretary Sandell. And second trustee Tobin, discussion? Okay, I need a roll call vote please.
Trustee Cheatham.
I.
Trustee Hare.
I.
Trustee Kershaw.
I.
Aye.
Trustee Sandell.
Aye.
Trustee Tobin.
Aye.
Vice President Linderman.
Aye.
President Young.
Aye. Okay, next is number 13, Board of Education Committees for the 2021 year. So we have the following committees, and we're only going to need one motion for items A through G. So once we establish the committees, then we will do a motion.
You get your motion and your second, then discussion.
Discussion. So I need a motion to establish the committees, please.
I saw.
I have Vice President Linderman, second, Secretary Sandell, and so for discussion, we will appoint the committee. Right. Okay, so we're going to start with A, facilities, and what I would like to do is do it the way we have traditionally done it in the past. Existing committee members will have the ability to remain on the committee if they so choose, and we will go by seniority on the committee. Trustee Hare.
Is that, is that the way the policy is written, or is it just total seniority? I'm forgetting.
In the, in the policy, it is, it is vague, and it is at the president's discretion.
Ah, got it, okay.
Yes, so it is, in this instance, I am opting to go with past practice.
Okay.
So.
And do we need a nomination, or? How's that?
For the appointment of the, of the committees.
Or any opening?
Nope, nope, we're gonna, the nomination would be for the chair, that is probably what you're thinking of, Secretary Sandell, that is in the.
No, I'm, I'm actually just thinking of the opening, anything Tom Figel was on, for example, is open.
Right, so what I'm going to do is go through the list of who is currently on the committee, and make sure they want to be on, and then we will fill any openings left by trustee Figel.
Thank you.
Only be this one, in this, only this facility committee here, so.
With that, I'm going to start with Vice President Linderman. Would you like to remain on the facilities committee?
Yes.
Trustee Pratt, would you like to remain on the facility committee?
Yes.
Trustee Lambalzer, would you like to remain on the facilities committee?
Yes.
And so now, we need a, I'd like to open it up to board members that are interested in taking trustee Figel's position on the committee as a committee member, not as chair. We're just filling the position on the committee.
I'm interested.
Okay, Secretary Sandell, do we have any other interested parties in joining the facilities committee? Okay, so then, trustee, Secretary Sandell, you are on the committee. And with that, I'm going to open it up to the existing committee members to, for a chair of your committee.
I nominate trustee Sandell.
I second that.
Thank you.
Secretary Sandell, will you accept that? Do you, would you, would you be interested in that chair?
I am interested and I accept it both.
Okay, so then I will, as president, oh, okay. Do I have any other recommendations from the committee for any other chairs of the committee? This would be, I guess, Ed or Kyle, if you had anything to add, because I've already heard from President Linderman and trustee Pratt. Okay, so then, I will, as president, appoint Secretary Sandell, chair of the facilities committee. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, the, is the grievance committee, and this committee, we don't typically appoint anyone at this meeting, because this is just an as-needed committee, if I'm understanding correctly.
That's true, each con, union contract has different language relating to grievance on, but there's usually a board member on the grievance committee, so at that time, grievance were filed and it went to that level, you would reach out to your board trustees then.
Okay.
And appoint somebody to be on that particular grievance.
Okay, thank you, thank you for the clarification. So with that, we will move on to policy and procedures. So, I have, Secretary Sandell, are you interested in remaining on policy?
No, I am not.
Okay. That's okay, that's okay. So then it would be myself, and I am interested in remaining on policy committee. And next, trustee Hare, are you interested in remaining on policy committee? Okay. And trustee Tobin, are you interested in remaining on policy committee? Okay, so we will need to fill Secretary Sandell's seat on policy. Do I have any trustees interested in joining the policy committee?
I am.
Renee, are you? I see Martha, trustee Kershaw, and also trustee Chiedom, correct? I, yes, okay, I thought you were, you're off camera, I wanted to make sure. So I think it is very important for new trustees to be on the policy committee, and I will, I don't want to say happily, because I love policy committee, but I will give up my seat so that both trustee Kershaw and trustee Chiedom can both join the policy committee. I think it's a very important committee for, especially newer board members, to really get a feel for what the district is run on, so we will add trustee Chiedom and trustee Kershaw to the policy committee, and I will no longer be on that committee. Okay, so next we have audit committee.
Are we doing chair?
Chair, that's right, I'm sorry. Moving right along, so, I need from our current policy members, I would like a recommendation, I'm looking for a recommendation from the committee members for a chair of that committee.
I would like to nominate Heather Hare.
Oh, okay. And trustee Kershaw, and I would like to just open it up, are there any other recommendations? Oh, trustee Kershaw, trustee Hare, will you accept that nomination?
Yes, I would be honored.
You are interested in that chair, please, okay, thank you. Trustee Chiedom, I just wanted to check in with you and make sure that, if you have any other thoughts, and trustee Hare as well, because I have the motion from.
Don't you have to serve?
Yeah, you have to. She could nominate someone else, though.
Correct.
What's the question?
I just want to make sure that you are also good with trustee Hare being chair, or have you had any other recommendations for chair of the policy committee?
No.
Okay, great. So trustee Hare, you are chair of policy committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I will miss it. Okay, so now moving on to district audit committee. We have trustee Pratt, are you still interested in audit committee?
Yes.
Okay, then it would be myself, and I am interested in remaining on audit committee. And trustee Tobin, are you interested in remaining on audit committee?
Yes, thank you.
You're, you're on mute, Leslie. We can't hear you, though.
I, I was just saying, I was just saying, yes, I would stay on the audit committee unless Renee is interested and there's no other spot. I would gladly go on my spot for Renee, I wanted to try that.
Okay, thank you. And Martha, are you interested in remaining on audit committee?
I'd actually like to step off the audit committee.
So do I have another trustee that is interested in joining the audit committee? We need four members on the committee.
If no one's interested, I may.
It's a lot of fun, you know, I don't, it's.
I just wanted to make room for somebody else, so if nobody wants it, then I'll keep it, but I wanted to be.
Okay, well, thank you, trustee Kershaw, and we will gladly keep you on audit committee. Thank you. So we now need.
Just offer the chair.
Oh, so trustee Pratt, since you are the chair, the current chair, I would like to offer you first the option to remain chair.
I will gladly remain as chair of the audit committee. If somebody else does want to step up who's on the committee, I'd be willing to support them also.
Okay, I don't feel that it's appropriate for myself to be a chair of a committee as president, and I know that the requirement is that you have served a full year on the committee in order to be a chair of the committee, so that would leave trustee Tobin. If you are interested, otherwise, we can continue on with trustee Pratt.
I don't know, Kevin, you do such a nice job, I'd be happy if you keep doing it.
I have no problem staying.
Great, thank you so much. So we have, trustee Pratt will remain chair of the audit committee, thank you very much, everyone. Okay, so moving right along, letter E, we have our NOSA, which is our Niagara City School Board Association representative. We need one of those, and we need a legislative liaison. Trustee Tobin, you have served in that position for the past year, would you like to continue?
I would like to continue as the NOSA rep, yes. I don't remember ever signing up to be a legislative liaison, I don't know how that happened. I'm sure you guys just roped me into it when I was scared and wide-eyed.
The legislative liaison office is when the Niagara City School Board Association meets with all the legislators in January.
Oh, yeah, I do.
If we're involved to help set up, that's legislative liaison, so that's why I got roped into it last year.
Yeah, I didn't mind doing that either.
Okay, excellent. If there is no one else interested, I would like to, I would like to see trustee Tobin continue on in that position, since she is willing and able. Okay, great. Next, we need letter F, is the district's school improvement liaison, this was filled by trustee Figel before, and I would like to open it up to people interested for that position.
I'm interested in that.
Trustee Kershaw.
I second trustee Kershaw.
Thank you, trustee Hare. Okay, great.
I third that.
All right, sounds good, is there anyone else interested in that position? Otherwise, trustee Kershaw, I think you'd be great at that position, and happy to write you in for that one. Okay, so we have trustee Kershaw is our new DSI liaison. And last, but certainly not least, is the Board of Education, state and federal legislative update for regular Board of Education meetings, and trustee Hare, you have a phenomenal job with that, would you like to continue, or would you like to pass that towards?
If anyone would like it, I would be happy to give it up, but I am also happy to continue. It's been a weird year to do it.
Right, and I don't know if it's going to be any more weird this year.
Yeah, no.
So do I, anyone else interested in doing the legislative update?
I second Heather Hare.
Okay, sounds good, so Heather, thank you very much for doing that, and we know it's a lot of work, and so if there's ever a time that you're unable to get it done, we know that you're, you're very busy with work and other obligations, so, you know, we fully understand you cannot get one to us before a board meeting, so.
Well, you won't have one for the board meeting following this meeting, just.
Excellent, and we are fully understanding of that.
Could I make one request to trustee Hare?
Sure.
Please, could you update it on the state's early retirement incentive?
I only look at the education ones, though, John.
You do expand your horizons, thank you.
So while we can add that to the, there's a discussion, so we are.
You're in discussion, you have a motion and a second, you're still in discussion.
Okay, so if there is any further discussion about the committee members, and about the district, the Board of Education Committees, if there's any further discussion, trustee Tobin?
I was wondering what it would entail if we were to create community member positions for our open continual committees, such as the audit committee? Does anyone, I don't know, I've never seen a policy on it, I don't know what it would.
We worked on that policy last year.
To have a member that actually serves on the audit or on the policy committee from the community, is that a possibility?
We can.
Something that we.
We can.
Go ahead, Heather.
We can look at that policy in our next policy meeting, if you'd like, and see what it would take.
Yeah.
We did look at that one the year before last, I think, so probably right before you came on.
Okay.
So we can look at that one again, I think it's time anyway.
Yeah, I think that would be great, and then of course, just for trustee Chiedom and anyone else to, just a refresher, every time any policy gets reviewed by the policy committee, it comes to the full board in your packet for what's called first reading, and at that point, you read through it and determine if there are any other changes that you think need to be made to that policy, and that's the time we all discuss it as, at the board meeting, and that's to bring it up, and then it would go back, and there was a second once any of the changes are incorporated or anything like that, so. I think that would be a great place to definitely look at that committee policy, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but, not today, but. So anyway.
Can I ask that a question?
Oh, go ahead, Renee.
I'm just thinking, what is it that you're actually looking to do with that, Leslie? I know you said something about getting someone from the community, what did you want, what were you looking at?
We, we can have that discussion when, when we have it in committee, I'm glad you're on that committee, because I think you're going to bring some great ideas to the, to the committee, and we'll be able to work on that and move forward then.
Okay. Yeah, and trustee Chiedom, what, what trustee Tobin brought up was, I'm not sure if you could hear, because she's a little, she's talking quiet tonight, so, but it was to look at some of our public committees and to, you know, see about appointing community members, so that they would attend the meetings, and, okay, so there would be that, if the policy, you would, you know, we would just edit the policy so that it would reflect that moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, any further discussion about the committees? Okay, so with that, I will take a roll call vote, please.
Trustee Chiedom.
Aye.
Trustee Hare.
Aye.
Trustee Kershaw.
Aye.
Trustee Lambalzer.
Aye.
Trustee Pratt.
Aye.
Trustee Sandell.
Aye.
Trustee Tobin. Trustee Tobin. Vice President Linderman.
Hi.
President Young.
Hi.
That was a big one. And so then, with that, we will move to action, item number two on our reorg agenda, which is to adjourn the reorganizational meeting, correct? Oh, trustee here, did you have a question?
What about the resolutions?
Those resolutions were what I listed under, um, over under number 10, under board authorization.
Oh, right. Got it.
Other authorization for page seven.
Got it.
So they just couldn't fit it into the, the regular agenda, added on at the end there.
Perfect.
Okay.
I move to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
I saw I have a motion.
Yeah, I thought you did. You did, you started, you did say it. You said it, and then you asked Heather to clarify something.
Oh, I got you, guys. So, and, um, so I have a motion and a second discussion. No discussion, I'm sorry. And no, no debate on that. And so with that, I need a roll.
Trustee Cheetum.
Hi.
Trustee here.
Hi.
Trustee Kershaw.
Hi.
Trustee Lambalzer.
Hi.
Trustee Pratt.
It's a new year, hi.
Trustee Sandell.
Hi.
Trustee Tobin. Vice President Linderman.
Hi.
President Young.
Hi.
Motion. Meeting adjourned.
We're staying on the same length.
Let's do it again.
Yeah.
Here. So, moving right along, we are now going to start our regular meeting. So I need a, I'm going to call for order. The regular Lockport City School District Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, July 8. This is a live stream only. We are, there is no public access at this point. This is being recorded and is live in, is live streaming. So with that, I'm going to need a motion to enter executive session.
Just read the top. Just read it right along.
Okay, I need a motion for the, okay, I need a motion for exec, to enter executive session to discuss an amendment to one employee's contract not associated with a bargaining unit to discuss the employment history for reasons of employment for one person who will be associated with LASSA, to discuss the potential retirement of one individual associated with LEA, to discuss the potential retirement of one individual associated with LSEA, and to discuss the current suspension of one individual with LEA. Motion, please.
So moved.
Second, trustee here. All in favor of discussion? No discussion, no discussion.
I gotta do the roll call.
Okay, so roll call, please.
Trustee Cheetum.
Hi.
Trustee here.
Hi.
Trustee Kershaw.
Hi.
Trustee Lambalzer.
Hi.
Trustee Pratt.
Hi.
Trustee Sandell.
Hi.
Trustee Tobin. Vice President Linderman.
Hi.
President Young.
Hi.
Your gavel, you're now in executive area.
We are now in executive session. The live streaming will stop, and we will restart the live stream once we come back out of executive session.